In the interest of time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask for any community comments. There being...
No community.
No community comments. I just want to mention a couple of points before we start. Since this group last met as a Dover School Committee, a couple of things have happened. A meeting was held, a very brief meeting was held at the joint level where a vote was taken to approve the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent. And I just want to thank everyone's flexibility in this group line that happened. I know the interim superintendent is going to talk a little bit more about that, but thank you for that. We also had the town meeting, and I'd like to take the chance to thank the community for their support for this school committee, for its efforts both on the operating budget and all our capital items, including the air conditioning proposal. Thank you very much. Today is town election. Thank you to everyone who've gone and voted and supported the school committee candidates for that. And also, I just want to thank all the people involved on both sides in reaching at the tentative agreement between the DSCA and the school committee negotiating team, as per the email from the interim superintendent to the community. It's a true testament that we have so many committed members of both the faculty, the staff of the building, and the community that worked so hard on that. So I just want to say a few thank yous.
Can we say thank you to you for all of your work on the air conditioning? Standing up in front of the sellout crowd and for being so prepared that nobody asks one question.
Well, it was really the advice that I've been given from so many people to talk to so many stakeholder groups beforehand. And the engagement happened, but I think rather than it happening on Q and A setting at town meeting, it happened beforehand. And that idea and that council did not come from me, it came to me. So I thank all the people who were very kind enough to work with me on that.
But you actually should take some credit that we did.
Well, I only stand up in front of a full room, so that was good. So the Dover PTA report and the corresponding action required is being moved to June. I received a phone call just a short while away, so we're going to move on from that. Which takes us to the report section, and I'd like to hand over to staff.
The report is just being phoned in.
Well, I would like to open it up with a tremendous thank you to all of you for the work you've done on everything that the school committee does, but in particular the air conditioning. I know there was an enormous amount of behind-the-scenes work on that, as well as the negotiations, and I give my sincere gratitude for all of that. We are approaching that incredibly busy end-of-the-year season, so we have a lot of exciting things happening here at Shickering, including some shifts in rooms around the school, which is one of those things that we need to address when we have additions. Some of those were mentioned in the principal's report in terms of additions of programming, of positions, which we embrace and appreciate the support for. Do you have any questions about the report?
I had two comments and questions, but the first one was, I was just very... When I first heard about, for example, grade four MCATs and you talked about the goals and how they progressed throughout the year, and when it was going to be online, obviously one thinks that's a tremendous amount of work and disruption. If I was a grade four teacher and I had my normal year coming ahead of me, and suddenly I've got this extra, very, very integrated element to juggle. As a parent of fourth grader, it seemed that that went relatively smoothly. As a person who drives couples of fourth graders, I hear comments from boys in other classes as well. And it seemed to have been, and from your report as well, that seems to have been an element of smoothness.
The team did a fabulous job with a lot of behind-the-scenes work, creating these experiences for the kids, and they really did add an awful lot to the routine curriculum. And I hope that it indeed goes smoothly. That's how it appeared to us as well.
And then the other point, again, it's great to hear about the positive transition with the long-term substitute music teacher going so well. Mrs. Barry is such a strong and significant presence. It's great when you have, I imagine it's great when you find a good substitute that can fill that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, she's done a beautiful job carrying things forward, and those are big shoes to fill indeed.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to Dr. Laduke.
Thank you. I wanted to provide an update of the foreign language elementary Spanish program because it is impressive what has been accomplished over these years, and to thank the school committees for their support of this program, so that our students have that global perspective of learning a second language. We met as a curriculum team, K-12, Mr. Ferris, the high school department chair, was there, Callie Edin, the middle school curriculum leader, there are two elementary FLESS educators and two elementary principals. And we spoke about the progress that has been made in reading, writing, speaking, and listening for Spanish for our elementary students. If you've had an opportunity to hear from your own children or to watch as that instruction happens, it's just amazing. So those two educators, Ms. Bridge and Ms. Rorro, will write the grade four curriculum. But it also begs the question from our middle school and high school staff about, so what's next? So when we met, we talked about that. And we're looking at a proficiency approach, looking at novice, intermediate type of a lens, and that's something new. So it aligns with the Foreign Language Association, but it's some work that we need to be doing at the elementary level, but also at the middle school level. And the model that's used where the Spanish is integrated into social studies and science, where students hear the content in English and then it's reinforced in Spanish, is a model they would like to replicate at the middle school too. So we have two years to get ready. We'll look at an assessment as an outcome from the fifth grade to sixth grade to give those educators some great information about what our fifth graders know and are able to do, understand, and can explain. And we'll continue to look at that, and so in the future, next year FLESS will be a focus and then the subsequent year. So I think when you see what's happened and how far we have come, it's just amazing. And a tribute to the educators, but to our students in particular. So I just wanted to make sure you had that FLESS update.
Just fast-forwarding those two years, I not wanted to prejudge the work and thinking that may happen, but would you expect sixth graders at the middle school to have the choice of Spanish or, let's say, French? I.e., they would have the chance, the option to drop Spanish? Or would you see Spanish as something that would continue for them as sort of core curriculum?
They could choose French. They could continue to have that choice in the sixth grade. You know, we'll see what happens. We don't have a sense of how many will continue to take Spanish and how many will then choose French.
Or Latin.
Or Latin.
Could I ask you questions in this area? When you just spoke about the proficiency level and having that lens, does that translate into going into the middle school that there might be separate classes? Like you would group them by those proficiencies, similar to what we do in math in the seventh and eighth grade? Is that where you see that going, or am I reading into it?
No, I think it still would be that differential approach to Spanish instruction as they do now. We just haven't labeled those proficiency levels. You'll see that varying degree of students in those classes already, but we just haven't labeled them yet. But I think as our fifth graders transition to sixth grade with those years of Spanish, we need to assess where they are and then start teaching them from that point forward. And we don't have a sense yet of what that might be.
And then I just wondered, because I loved the comment about that it's so far in your assessment, that it's far exceeding the outcomes that were originally discussed. I wondered if one of those outcomes came to mind that you might share with us that was beyond what was originally envisioned in this program when we rolled it out.
The amount of actual reading and writing of Spanish in our current third grade is just amazing to me. We actually modeled it with picture books to translating current texts that our first and second graders may be reading directly into Spanish, but students are just reading and writing and looking at Spanish, totally immersed. There was no English spoken in that classroom, so they understand.
Is it thinking then that if they start Spanish, this all happened way before my time, unfortunately my son missed out on this, which I'm devastated. That they will then, if they switch to French in the middle school, for example, they would have a stronger aptitude to be able to pick that up? Is there any correlation there?
There's actually no correlation, believe it or not, but that there's an opportunity to have exposure to Spanish and then to decide that they wanted to study French in the middle school.
Any questions to Dr. Laduke? No, thank you. Brilliant, thank you very much. Have you got another section?
Anything else from the report? I just wanted to highlight the educator and administrator surveys were part of the educator evaluation system. And for the first time, educator survey results will be published, not published, but reported to the building level, so that we can see the individual results of each educator. And that's one component of the end-of-the-year discussion with educators. Remember that the elementary survey was homegrown, something that a group of educators across both schools collaborated on the questions, and it was administered kindergarten through grade five. So those trends were reported, and you'll see those. And that the administrators have participated in the tripod survey for their second year, and those results are reported to the superintendent, but also individually.
So the only last thing on the report from myself is just to register a free song of excitement on the science curriculum. I know that the next meeting is on the May 17th. I'm sure whether it's June or whether it's probably in the fall, this committee would love to have some nuggets of that enhancement and change. We'd love to have that, I think.
Just amazing, the sharing that happened, the collaboration across the two schools. They're looking at elementary's engineering packaging units, Museum of Science units, habitats, trips to Broadmoor, just great collaboration across the two schools. But it's a tribute to those who are working, in particular here at Pine Hill, Dr. Reiman and Kathy Caverini, who facilitated that work for us. So it's been wonderful, and the conversation will continue this Wednesday with more to come.
Karen, does that mean Pine Hill and Shickering now are aligned in the content and even when they're teaching the content at both schools? Because that was very different in the two buildings.
And the same, similar materials, but not to take away that teacher creativity and response to the students in front of them, but for the first time in the sciences, that's what we have. That's what we will have going forward. Two more units will be written next year.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Can I hand over to the interim superintendent?
Thank you, Adrian. In your packet were materials related to the latest enrollment report, information that gives you a snapshot as of May of the personnel changes that have occurred since the beginning of the year. And then just another announcement regarding the appointment of the new Assistant Superintendent. So that information is in your packet. Elizabeth McCoy has signed her contract, so she was in today finalizing that. So she's very excited to start, and she'll be around for probably two or three days between now and the end of the year, meeting with some people. I know she's going to shadow Dr. Laduke for a day. I think that will be very helpful for her. But she's just very excited, and the process, I think, went very, very well. I thank the members of the screening committee. They did, excuse me, they did a really fine job with this search. We were very fortunate that we had many, many, many highly qualified candidates, but the cream rose to the top here. And we're excited and fortunate that Elizabeth will be joining us. I know that she and Andrew have had a couple of conversations already, and they'll be doing some collaboration this spring as they move towards the July 1 start, so.
So in terms of timing, are they both starting on the same day?
They are.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they are indeed.
All right.
And then the enrollment, the enrollment report, there were a couple of changes since the last one in March. You know, we're on target. We're not seeing the during-the-year growth this year that we saw last year, which is good. And we're still watching closely the kindergarten numbers. We're just at 60, maybe 61 now, depending on our last communication. So we've seen considerable growth since March.
Was that around 50 the last time we met? Identified kindergarteners?
Yeah, it was actually, it was actually... Yes.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Yeah. So Laura and I have been talking about that regularly. We'll make some decisions, I think, early part of June, again, based on the numbers on whether to officially move forward with that fourth classroom section. We do have, Mrs. Branley is retiring, so right now we've had that flexibility of just holding off before we make that final decision.
When's a late date, or when is a good cutoff date for that decision?
Yeah, I think at the end of the first week in June, you know, that's typically a time when parents who, you know, they know they're coming into the community as they're finishing up school where they are, they're thinking ahead, and they're making calls and really letting us know, is there anything I need to do before the school year ends for you? Perhaps not sure whether offices are open over the summer. So I think we'll have a much better sense then. And then, you know, we'll do some work on looking at, over the last two summers, you know, once we've ended the school year, how many new enrollees have we had? Just to give us some context on what we might be able to expect, especially given the sales data that we've seen so far this year. So, you know, I think, my sense is we'll probably move forward to fill it, because if we don't, then we're really going up against the guideline. And if we fill it, that gives us, you know, it gives us a lot of flexibility, not just for next year, but again, it creates those spots as we move, as we think, even a year down the road. Great, thank you. Any questions to the interim superintendent?
Oh, I have one question. Is there an update to the interim team chair position or the team chair position?
So, you know, thank you. Actually, I was going to talk about that, say a few words, and I forgot, so thank you. So we talked as we, I think on a couple of occasions over the year, we've talked about when the time comes to post it, that posting as a full-time position was probably an option that we needed to do, given that the last two years we posted a part-time just hasn't yielded the quality, the field of qualified candidates. So it was posted. We are, it's important though that for next year, the team chair piece of it really stay at a .8 level. And that's really, that's more related to the fact that all the other three team chairs are .8, and that if we just hire somebody here because we can do it, you know, creates an equity situation. So the conversations that we've had, what we hope to do is we'll have that person spend .2 of their time really focusing on the preschool program in an effort to continue to try to build the numbers as we move forward. And, you know, we've been, we are, right now, we're projecting 21 students in pre-K for next year. That's up from 12. We started the year at 12. I think we might have 13. I forget what the last numbers were. But, so, you know, we have the capacity with two classrooms now to get that program to close to 30 kids. And so I think that will be time well spent. And the vast majority of the candidates that we're seeing certainly have that early childhood experience and exposure. And part of that will be to reach out and work with counterparts at Pine Hill to get a sense of perhaps what they've done in their program, because their program is really robust and continues to grow as well. So we think that will work well. In the meantime, Laura and her team are, you know, they're interviewing. It's still proving to be a difficult position to fill, but I think they're hopeful?
Yes. But the interim, the person who's filling the seat now, she's definitely retiring from that interim position?
Yes, yeah. It will be difficult to get a waiver for her. She didn't work with the waiver this year. We were able to do that because she worked under a waiver last year. And so the way that works, we're able to make that work and have her in a way that she was still within the guidelines. But it would not work without a waiver, and the state is really cracking down. And so when they see a request for someone coming back a third year, it's highly unlikely. And we need a permanent person in that position anyway, so that's been the plan from the beginning. So I'm optimistic we will be successful, and perhaps we'll have something to share at the next meeting regarding that.
So I just have one last question. It's to do with the actually development of the region, with the town meeting approving the budget of the region, and my mind on Dover finances. I got, I was again minded of the exciting enhancements of special education programming at the region, and I just wondered if there was, anything you might be able to share on...
Yes, thank you. So we have, we are moving forward and creating a high school sister program for the language-based classroom. There's now, there's a program placed with one teacher and some educational assistance support that covers both the middle school and high school. Our numbers have grown to the point where we will be establishing a separate high school program. It will allow, it will allow us to better serve the academic needs of the high school students in that program. So we're moving forward with that, and we are moving forward with the life skills program. So that's the program we started this year at the middle school with one student who would have been going out of district, staying in district. And next year, the good news there is we're able to start the program because we do have a student coming back. It's a Dover student and currently in a placement, outside placement that costs in the range of $91,000. So that student will come back. You'll see, there'll be some kind of, you'll see that information when we move forward with the next out-of-district updates. But that's official. The plan has been signed, and we're really excited about that. Some work at the high school has already started in terms of reallocating some space. And it's, I think it's a great opportunity for not just, not just the region in terms of programming, but it's always, it's always excellent news when we can bring our students home.
Yeah, it's great.
Tremendous. So we're really excited about that.
Thank you. Any other questions to go? Perfect. Can I hand over to Mr. Tor?
So it killed you with the reports.
They're fabulous, always.
So what you have in your Thursday packet was the report as of April 30th, and just a couple of highlights there. Two things that happened. When was that we were reviewing our grant funds and wanted to make sure that we're not carrying forward any funds for next year? So that allowed us to take $13,000 from our general fund and charge it against the grant fund. So that took away some salaries, which we had a negative variance in anyway this year for the general fund. So that was a good thing. At that, as of April 30th, we were still approximating about $50,000 from your operating expenditures, net against the $80,000 in salaries, and we had $5,000 in out-of-district. So we were looking at about a negative variance of $25,000.
I don't know how you do that.
A lot happened, a lot happened in those first two weeks of May, and so I wanted, since we were meeting tonight, I put together a report as of today to highlight some other things. So it wasn't waiting until, because you guys meet so often in June, it's information and when to bring forward. So as Laura mentioned, we did hire a permanent long-term staff, which until we hire a permanent long-term staff, we don't encumber the money for the staff. So when she was hired last week, that then took about $7,800 from your substitute lineup. So that was one number that I wanted to share. In addition, we, I looked closer at our unencumbered, so I've been projecting that we were going to use all of our substitutes and all of our custodial. I looked closer at our custodial numbers, and I think at this point, I felt comfortable saying there are probably $10,000 or $15,000 in that function code that come June 30th we will have not utilized. So that will also offset the negative salary variance. The substitutes, you still have $12,000 left. It's hard to estimate, but I do think you're going to have some leftover from that also, based on where we are right now in the year. Looking at the expenditures, we had back in, I think it was December or January, when we did not fill that BCBA position, we said we were going to cover it with $9,000 of outside services. That has actually incrementally crept up to a point where it's about $22,000 now. So we had to uncover additional $13,000 this past month to cover that, which puts them at a negative salary variance in that function code of $12,000. However, we filled up our tanks for oil, and we ended up with $48,000 savings in oil this year. Now, based on a little bit of lower usage, but also we just got a phenomenal price with the tech oil bid this year.
Lock in again?
Yes. Well, yes. So as I said, June 1st is the bid opening for next year.
Is that, did I just see that in the warrants, the fuel?
Yes, that was the top.
And that was a new vendor, right?
No. Hallison Oil.
It has all year?
Yeah, all year, yes. So I remember though going, coming back from that oil bid last year and telling Billis that I think that just saved us a teacher, because at that point we were looking at, so $48,000 really is savings, you know, pay for one of the additional teachers we had to do. So we were very grateful that that happened, because we are very conservative. We, you don't want to under-budget your oil. So we have brought it down a little bit, but you always have to cover yourselves for that.
Isn't that, don't they give us that rate in our guidelines, or is that something?
They give us a pretty, right, they give a pretty high rate. And we're always with the tech oil bid able to get a much better...
Better, but we still, for the budget, we follow the guidelines.
Exactly. We follow the guidelines, and that's why we always usually have a surplus. But you just never know. We'll find out in June. In addition, on the bus contract, diesel fuel obviously has been very favorable. So instead of having to pay them a fuel surcharge, they've been cutting us back. So in the budget, we actually have money to pay them. So we have, that all's going to free up, plus all the credits that we're getting back. So we're going to have about a $15,000 savings in transportation this year.
Don, on the custodians, are we going to encumber any additional costs? Are they going to have to work more over the summer, or?
But that's next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we take that to account?
Right. If we, so there is time budgeted in the summer for overtime for various projects that can't be done during the day, so that might be... So, that might be tacked on.
Okay.
We're even talking about, we hire summer help that maybe somehow will be, share a little bit more here if they need it.
Okay.
It's just, so we'll have some staff that we can maybe shift around if we need to. But until we sort of get into it, I know exactly what we need to do.
We can't really put any numbers on it.
But there's money, as you can see, there's money. We allocate money for snow, because we don't know how much snow overtime we're going to have in summer projects.
Okay.
Yeah. So, really, with, it's all said and done, you know, I think that you're going to end up probably right at budget when everything flushes out at the end of June 30th, which is great news considering, again, that we had to add the two teachers on without having them budgeted. And we'll be able to get back probably almost 100% of the circuit breaker to the town. And I noted for you, we just found out last, end of last week, no, this was, yeah, end of last week, that the special ed department had applied for extraordinary relief circuit breaker funds, because we have had some increases in our in-district and a little bit of out-district that you can apply for. And so, we today actually received, Tom received additional $43,515 that will go into our circuit breaker funds.
That just goes right to the town.
Exactly.
Don, I just stuck out to me, and it's probably discussed somewhere, and I just, I'm not remembering, but the course reimbursement and the textbook?
Right. So, course reimbursement, we, the majority of that, we pay out in June. The course, because it's the fourth. So, you know, we can get $400, but then at the end, if we have money, they can get up to $1,500. So, a lot of them wait and just, as of June 1st, we usually do a big payout. So, that will be forthcoming. But whatever is left of that, remember, then is used for workshop days between the end of school and June 30th. That money then reverts back, and Laura can have her staff use some of that money for curriculum development. So, that will all get spent.
So, it's not encumbered, but that's, you're factored into you projecting what your bottom line is?
Yeah, exactly.
Because you think that's, that's not going to be.
Yes. Everything that you see left, I'm going to, we're projecting we're going to use except for the positive variances that I mentioned to you.
Okay, that's in your files.
Because the textbooks is there, they're on the cycle where they were buying some stuff for the next year. And so, you will see that disappear. In fact, your June report, your very, very report will have everything encumbered.
So, the result of the process that Don uses is that it's a very conservative, it's a conservative projection, which is, I think, good practice.
I will project what I know, you know, that I report to you guys that I actually substantiate.
So, the, could you talk a little bit just on the, the special revenue revolving funds?
Yes. So, you have that as of March 31st.
So, that would not include the cost of the design study, the AC? Or it does?
Not in this.
Yeah.
Because if you read the capital report, okay, that's what, so that goes gently.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not there. But it does it because the $27,000 that was the first payment we paid is actually sitting in your general fund. Because you had money available to take care of.
In the maintenance account.
In the maintenance account. And that is paid, already paid for, and it's showing up as an expense in May 15th. So, that was another big transaction that I felt like it would happen last week that I wanted to share with the school committee. Now, if something happens and there are emergencies that come up, then we might not be able to do that. But at this point, we put it there because we had the availability, and it was May 15th.
Yeah, I don't remember what our capitalization policy is, but whatever, that accounting treatment is all kosher with policy?
Yes.
On what we charge to maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, right, so that's not in there. So, the numbers that you see here are your building rental. And as you know, we have started charging custodial overtime for outside groups to your building fund, which we had not been doing in the past.
Which is why it kind of all sets.
Exactly. But you also probably don't have all the revenue in there.
Okay.
Yeah. Because some, some groups, they bill all, so the custodials overtime, we pay as they incur, and sometimes the groups don't pay until they're completely done with their sessions of practices or such. Food services were, with the food, with the lunch price increase and a little bit higher participation and no real emergencies this year, is continuing to build a nice, healthy fund balance versus the negative that we had for the last couple of years.
What was, how much was the increase in usage or enrollment for?
For participation?
Yes.
It's only got up, like, it went from like 41 to like 43%.
Even a percentage increase.
It does, has an impact. Yeah. And Janelle, like, has, she's been tracking the numbers on how much more she's getting in revenue based on the price increase that quarter.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's.
She can see both.
Yep. So, she can see both, and she's been tracking that. But all three districts actually are having a really good year in the food service.
And just looking at five years in capital needs in the cafeteria, you've, you're watching all that, and there's nothing in the foreseeable future for, I mean, that needs to be talked about?
So, the onset, the onset inside report, that will be updated over the summer. The one, the one kink in it, in terms of the copy that we've been working on, is that it did not include cafeteria equipment. Is that correct?
It had some, but maybe to the extent that would be helpful for the capital planning.
So, one of the requests that the capital subcommittee has made when they revisit it over the summer is that it fully, fully takes in all elements of the cafeteria capital needs.
Your gift fund now includes the $10,000 from the lunch gift. And I just want to highlight for preschool, at this point, with all salaries encumbered that we had budgeted for the preschool, it is running a small negative variance, because revenues weren't quite what we had thought they were going to be. If that ends that way this fiscal year, that will have to be moved into the general fund, because we have to end a revolving fund with a zero. It can't go negative. So, we'll wait and see how that all pans out. But I'm pretty sure 100% of revenues for this year has been collected, so we may have to transfer a little bit to the general fund. Between the playground money and having the revenue be a little bit lower, we did actually expend the balance, the safety balance.
From last year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the financial report?
The student activity fund, that's the fund used for field trips and the overnight?
There's no overnight anywhere.
There isn't, right? So, why is this, I guess?
There is a day, three-day, so that still costs.
And that has a challenge?
And they, and it has a little bit of a surplus. It doesn't, they build up a little bit of a surplus in that account. So, it won't go to zero. Like, it's not a complete in and out watch.
Okay. So, if we move on to the capital projects update, and thank you for the update document, would you like to just talk it through?
I think I just wanted, I know that we've been working pretty closely, Brooke, Andrea and I, but I realized we should probably communicate to the rest of the committee all that's been going on with the air conditioning and the fact that all of your capital projects were approved at town meeting. But the air conditioning is like moving right along. The town meeting was May 1st. On May 3rd, the RFP was advertised. We had a site visit on Wednesday last week. And the electrical sub-bids are due tomorrow. We'll do a bid opening for that. But the real bid opening will be a week from Wednesday on May 24th. And at that point, probably pretty much right after that, because we're on a fast track, it will be awarded to hopefully the lowest and best bidder.
So, from yes to completion? I know, I know we think we can get it done in the summer, but is this like a six-week build-out, four-week build-out?
So, the timeline is for them to be done by the end of August. Construction phase really is the bulk of like mid-July, because they, they'll have to get started.
In a different period of running basis, though?
It's not.
Because it's really more on the outside.
Exactly.
So, it won't affect the camp that they run here in the summer?
No. No. Because the camp, remember, runs in the cafeteria and then outside.
Okay. They don't use the classrooms.
They don't use the classrooms. We will have to coordinate preschool, because we do have six-week summer preschool in one of the classrooms, but it's just in one of the classrooms. So, we'll work around that.
Right. So, I'm sorry. So, are we looking at four or five weeks, or?
It's about, when they're physically here, probably from mid-July until opening of school.
Okay.
And if there is a timing overrun, is it planned to then work on weekends after that?
We can, right, we can open up the school for longer at-work days. We've already, we need to, we're going to accommodate whatever we can to get them done. Until we have somebody here and we know what the parameters are going to be, it's hard to.
I would say in this project, sometime around the end of the first week in August, there'll be a meeting where, where progress is, is talked about. And if they feel they're running behind, there will be a number of options. Some options would be that they work Saturdays, just not immediately. They might work additional hours during the day. So, there'll be a number of options that, that, that we'll be able to consider in order to try and have the construction piece completed by, you know, prior to staff coming back. The one thing is that the inside work is, there's still a fair amount of inside work that'll happen above the ceilings. There's, there's wiring that has to be run, and then there are, there are condensate piping that will be run to various locations throughout the building. And that will all be done above the ceiling. So, so, so portions of the ceiling, the tiles will be, will come down, and, you know, you'll probably see those tiles down for most of the summer. And one of the last things they'll do is put everything back together, just in case they have to get back up there, you know, while work is, is going on. So, so while, while, you know, the big equipment is outside, there will still be considerable work inside the building.
Interesting. But the, the general message to them is that coming in late won't be an option. There, there are other ways that they can work around they need to, to complete on time?
There will be other options, but I will tell you that, that, you know, built into the contracts, there are, there are a number of clauses, you know, if, if equipment for some reason manufacturing, you know, there's a delay, the contract, that's not the contract, the contractor's in at fault for that. If there are unknown conditions that they come across and that causes a delay, you know, they're not responsible for that. So, so we, you know, we, we believe that based on what the, the engineering consultant has said and from what we understand from some of our vendors that have worked with us for a number of years, you know, we, we think the timeline is tight, but, but it's doable. And if they run into a problem for whatever reason, and they look for an alternate schedule, there will be, I can assure you, there'll be a cost factor to that. You know, they're not going to come in and work Saturdays for zero. They will, there will be an added charge that they'll want.
When, if it's, if it's, if it's one of those contract delays and not their own delay, right?
Yeah. But they're very, they're very good at, they're very good at documenting the fact that it's never their delay.
Yes.
But, but we're not, we're anticipating it's going to go very smoothly and, and, you know, we won't have those, those issues. There may be some, there may be some commissioning work, you know, that get, that gets done once after school has started, you know, but that's not, that's really, that's not.
Towing the system versus.
Yeah. And that can all happen after hours. You know, and maybe, maybe there's some, some last-minute, you know, equipment pieces, whether they're thermostats or whatever, but, you know, we can, we can always figure out a way to get that done.
We keep being told it's very straightforward.
Yeah.
So, I'm just going to try not to worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, and then they've looked at the ceilings, they've looked.
And so, just for the, for the, for the committee, the recommendation from the design firm was that there'd be one outside condenser per wing. So, there are four, there are four around the school rather than 34. And these are, these are the size of a refrigerator, and Dawn and Bill already talked about professional fencing and just, just making sure that those are blocked off.
There's really only one that people are going to generally see, and it's, it's going to be out there on the playgrounds, right outside where the brick, where the basketball courts are, sort of on that one side. There will be one there. So, we'll really make sure that that fencing looks, you know, sort of blends in, so it doesn't stick out. The other ones are going to be places where you wouldn't.
You won't see them.
You wouldn't see them.
Over that side and.
In the back of the school.
Are they high enough that kids won't climb on them?
Yeah.
And the, the noise factor, which is the small ones?
Wasn't, wasn't.
Were different?
No. Wasn't, wasn't an issue. So, so the, so that's, that's progressing. Do you want to talk about the other projects?
Right. So, the cafeteria flooring, obviously, we will wait until the playground camp is finished, but we're hoping to get that installed in August. And the Chromebooks, the IT department will have up and ready for when school opens. That's easy, just a cart. On the other projects, working with IT right now to get our three quotes that we need to move forward, an award bid for the AV project. Hopefully, I'll have that for you at your June meeting. And so, you know, the total cost, they can decide what funds you want to pull the additional funding from that.
Do you have, has the money from the PTO arrived for that?
From, no, it has not.
The PTO has not.
I think they were waiting for us to probably say we're doing it and initiating that. So, we, right now, you just have the $10,000.
Is that something that'll be ordered for this summer?
Yes. The plan is, yeah. Because Pine Hill's doing the same thing, so we're really hoping out one vendor will come in and do both. And then, as you remember, the Green Community, last minute add-on to the operating budget, we, Kelly and I met with the representative who the town has selected to oversee all the lighting projects in the town, and we raised our hand to please be on the list first, so that there's potential that they would, as soon as school gets out, as long as the project has been commissioned by Eversource, who has to approve the projects, they will start here first. And they anticipate that to be about a two-week project, so we can get them in and out before, yes, before the.
So, like, these lights here will be?
Yes.
Every ceiling light?
And does the fixture say the same? And it's just?
So, no, the whole, there'll be new ballasts. So, those will, all the cans, though, are not, those are going to stay, because those are compatible. So, Mr. Kelly actually is going and getting all the LED lights, and the custodians will input them.
So, just those over there will just have new bulbs?
Yeah. Because those, they're not replacing. They actually inventoried every single light fixture in here. And so, it needs to be replaced, doesn't need to be replaced, what it's being replaced with. So, we have a complete inventory. So, there are some that don't, that cans that don't need to be replaced, and they told us what light bulbs to get. So, Ralph is going to get those. We're going to put them in. If there's any problems putting them in, we're going to do that ahead of time. So, while they're here, they can add those on if they need to.
And did we have to purchase those light bulbs?
These we will have to purchase, the ones that are we replacing ourselves. But they're like a dot, I mean, it's the LED lights that he's getting for a related load rate.
And are those replacing a combination of incandescent and CFL, or are they all incandescent bulbs?
I think here, everything is interior incandescent.
So, the, the amount of savings that was, that was indicated to us, it was almost hard to believe.
Like, right, exactly.
I mean, the, the electricity bill for the school is, from the last time we were talking to you, about $65,000 to $70,000 a year.
I think it's like a little more than that.
Okay, a little more.
I feel like we just paid that too in the last.
Then we won't, we won't need air conditioning anymore.
No, but there's, they're putting up. But the, the savings that was indicated to us from the town were about 30% more than the extra cost of running air conditioning was dedicated to it.
Yeah. It's a combination of the savings they calculate for is a combination of your energy savings and not having to replace your light bulb. So, it's not just all energy savings, I clarified that. Part of it is materials and labor that you're not going to have to replace a light bulb every, however long. So, so that will be, so there is a lot going on this summer, and no one will recognize it when they come back.
Tremendous. Okay. Any more questions to Mr. Tor? Okay. So, it comes to me to say a few words. So it comes to me to say a few words. The young lady next to me on my left is, this is her last school community meeting after six years of service. And it's, it's quite rare in either a social context or a work context or any group context that, that I've met somebody who has inspired me to aspire to be better at what I do. Ever since I, my first meeting and Lauren opened her mouth, my reaction was, oh my good God, she knows so much about what she's talking about. She's, and, and for me, ever since my, my first meeting, I, I felt I had to work to be better at a school community member because you were setting the example so high. So from, whether it's your keen interest in the finances of the school, the, the, how special education is provided, whether it's your request to have updates on the ELA curriculum or just the, the sheer energy and willingness to serve this town with all your skills, it's been an absolute privilege to be here as long as I have, watching you. Because I think you've made this group better every time we've come together. So for me, I want to say thank you very much. I don't know if I'm going to say something, but I have two things for you. Firstly, I have, as is custom in DS, an apple. Thank you very much. And I also have something rather sweet, which I will open. It is a little expression of our thankfulness. And it says, "From Chico School in Town of Dover, presented to Lauren Doherty, an appreciation for outstanding dedication and visionary guidance." I want to say thank you very much.
Wow, I am so. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I hope you can see how exasperated I am by your kind remarks, because I honestly am never as eloquent as you are. And I feel that I hold each one of you in this room and have, in the same esteem that you just described and I'm shocked to hear. It's been my privilege to sit here for the last six years. I, I, it's literally a privilege because to, to see and to hear and to watch all of these professionals in our education system in the town of Dover, it's a privilege to watch what you do. I mean, I think as parents, we see the results, but to see how it happens is really a unique position to be in. And I think it's, it really is remarkable. We set goals at the superintendent's level and to see those cascade down and then reach your child's classroom and to actually like literally tangibly see those decisions that are made collectively by a system and see them come out and be delivered to your children is really a cool thing. So I guess to the public, it is worth every minute you put into this, it comes back to you tenfold what you get out of it. And the respect that I hold for every person in the system is, is, it can't be any higher. So thank you for doing what you do and with the energy and with the professionalism that you have. And to every person that has ever sat at this table with me, I, I am always in awe of what you bring to the table. And the questions that are asked are, always lead to something that makes it better. And so thank you for letting me have this opportunity to work with you. I've truly enjoyed it.
So I would say if you, if you add the accent, you've exceeded his.
Is that?
Brilliant, okay. Thank you. So I'd like to call the committee's attention to the consent agenda. We have approval minutes March 13th and April 3rd. And I'd like to request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I?
Yes.
Salute.
Thank you.
Second.
I had just, there's, maybe it's the minutes of April 3rd.
Yep.
I'll just note that number six, I think there was, the regional just accidentally swapped into this and needs to be updated to reflect the Dover. I'd like to number six.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is it?
Thank you.
See what I mean?
That came from you. From watching you.
Well, started.
So with that edit, may I, all those in favor approving, say aye. We have communications, we have minutes from the region and from Sherburne. And I would point out that we, the next time we meet in June, it's a recent change of that date, it's no longer going to be June 20th, it'll be Monday, June 19th. And we're meeting starting at 5:30, ending at 6:45, at which time the joint school committees of the three, the three committees will come here and we'll have our joint school committee meeting here starting at 6:45 on that Monday.
So I'm sorry, it's 5:30?
5:30, yep. Piggybacking on the same date.
And it's here rather than the middle.
Without further ado, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, 7:28. Thank you very much.